Okay, I see by my clock on my cellphone, it's three o'clock, time to call the Order Director's Regular Meeting Study Session Agenda to order, the Thursday, July thirteenth. We will skip item two, since we're all present here today. And Pledge of Allegiance on Monday as well. Good rule call, please.
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Present.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Griffith.
Present.
Vice President Sewell.
Here.
And President Martin.
Present.
Thank you, we have corn.
Okay, we'll also skip the rules of procedure, I think we're all familiar with that. And moving on to item six, public input, are there any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Martin, there are not.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, Human Resources Report.
We'll do that usually on Monday.
Okay.
Here today, but we do have a few people that we want.
Mr. Wallen, your mic, please.
My deepest apologies. We have a few people that we do want to recognize.
Okay.
Promotions, anniversaries, and a new hire. So we'll do that on Monday.
Monday, okay. Moving on to item eight, Proposed Adoption of Mission Springs Water District Social Media Policy Number twenty-three dash zero one. And I understand that's going to be a presentation by Mary.
Yes, it will, but, but, but just as she's getting ready to, to do this, I did want to mention to everybody that we do, we did have, or we do have a, a social media policy that was developed quite some time ago, and the funny thing about it is, is that it is completely different today than it was then. I think we were addressing blogging. There wasn't any such thing.
Yeah.
As, as what we're dealing with today.
Okay, Mary Ann.
Great, thank you, General Manager Wallen, and good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board. I'm gonna try to share my string screen right here. There we go. Um, today I do, I have a social media policy that I'd like to bring with you for your consideration. After returning home from one of the CSDA conferences, a couple of board members and multiple staff members brought it to my attention about what type of social media policy we had in place. And we, and as General Manager Wallen said, we didn't have one that really addressed today's current social media. So, um, having developed one both for the Imperial Irrigation District and also for College of the Desert, I felt very confident in being able to draft something up. Uh, so I went ahead and put it, something quickly together, and then, um, I went to John Pinkney's office and I had them review it. Um, you know, when I started at IID, social media was really in its infancy, and it was really a tough time to get social media going, so much so that uh, even my water department, they were scared of being part of it, so we branded it all with IID Energy. Um, you know, that actually quickly changed, and we actually really started to embrace it and use it as a communication tool for our customers. Um, College of the Desert was a very different approach. There, they were very siloed in their work, and they had more than thirty different branded channels uh, that we had to manage there, and getting those all under control and under one um, kind of policy and grouping was a bit of a challenge. Um, but in general, you might be wondering, why is this so important? Uh, most of us have, you know, personal social media every day that we look at on our phones, on our cellphones, and we don't need a policy to guide us in what we do in our personal accounts. But it's a little bit different as a public agency. Um, as a public agency, we have certain responsibilities, especially when it comes to freedom of speech. Um, that's something that, uh, if you worked at a private institution or on your personal social media, you're not subject to that, but as a public agency, we have a different set of rules. So again, like I said, I did work with John Pinkney. I pulled together a draft, and then his team looked at it very closely and really shorted up and made it something that we can really, uh, stand behind. Before I get too deep, though, into it, I also wanted to mention that this is just the first step. The next step will be, we will do something that'll be board-specific, that can be adopted into the Board Handbook, um, and that'll be coming after this, it'll complement what we have here today. The main purpose of our policy in the bottom line is really protect, to protect the district. There are several other items, um, you know, that we want to include this approach. Um, and given the popularity of social media always being available twenty-four seven, you know, social media happens very fast, and it can quickly harm our brand and our identity. So some of the main components of this plan includes establishing who is responsible for managing MSWD's social media channels, and providing guidelines for employees and representatives who interact with the public through the social media, uh, sites. We also want to establish the standards to which all employees and representatives must adhere to as public employees when accessing or using social media at work, especially when they're using MSWD equipment, or whenever employees or representatives refer to MSWD-related business on social channels. I won't go into every bit of the detail, it's six pages long, and I'm sure you guys have had a chance, hopefully, to read it. But there are some key points and some things I want to lift up and point out to you. Um, in the General Policies Note section, um, once this document is finalized and adopted, we will make this po- policy available on our website so that our customers and people can have access to it, and we will link to it from our social media accounts so that it's very, very transparent to the public. Um, also, I wanted to make sure that we understand that by creating this policy, we'll now have the ability to remove posts that violate the policy. Um, in the past few months, I have been very hesitant to re, to re- remove anything because without a stated policy, it looks like we're picking and choosing what things we want to, want to take off. Um, but please understand, this is not meant to stifle communication, it's not meant to take away from engagement. Um, it really is just going to enhance and make a, a safe place for people to come. Some of the biggest examples that I see most often where posts, um, you know, are, are not with this policy were when they wanted to advertise products, products, services, or events. Um, while on the surface, this may not seem like much of a big deal, the problem is when somebody posts it to our site, and then one of our customers or somebody that follows us goes to that, somehow it looks like we've now endorsed that product, or we've endorsed that event, and, um, it may be something that we don't want to be affiliated with. And this gives us straight guidelines for that, and so there's no, no wiggle room there, whether or not we want to or we don't want to. Um, the, what I used to tell my staff when I was at College of the Desert and thus also at IID is if you couldn't have a logo on that flyer, then it shouldn't be posted to our social media site. Um, it's just good rule of thumb that that way it's, it really represents the district. And of course, all the posts will continue to have the same freedom of speech rights and be subject to all laws and regulations that includes the California Public Records Act, and also Brown Act violations. So all, everything within this policy adheres to that. On the content area, uh, I do want to stress that this will guide our content management, but it will not dictate our strategy. Things like how often we post, the voice, the messaging, uh, all of that will still continue to be the responsibility of the Public Affairs Office with oversight from the General Manager. The content is only supplemental, and it will not replace any of our required notices like Board Agenda packets, postings, or printed pump, public notices. Um, the social media is still just a secondary source of information. Again, all postings should somehow pertain to MSWD in our business, and they will apply to all applicable laws. They also will not endorse religious beliefs or cross, uh, privacy boundaries, and they shouldn't discriminate against any special classes or protected classes. A good, uh, social media policy also addresses personal social media use, something that I have stressed with my kids, and I also have to constantly recommend and remind our college volleyball players, is that nothing you post on social media is private, and you must assume anything you put on here is public. Therefore, whenever an employee or a director or a representative publishes something on their pages, uh, something that, a post that's related to the district, they really have a responsibility to identify themselves as affiliated with the district. This allows for better transparency with our public. That way, they know who they are speaking to, and they have a good idea of where this information has come from. Uh, you know, examples of this would be, you know, using your work email address to register for a social media account or other sites. Um, we, we, we don't want them to do that. We, you want to keep your private life private, you want to leave your business life separate. So the only people who would be using their, uh, MSWD-issued email accounts would be people who are authorized to speak for the district. Um, District Employees or Directors should not display the district's logos or emblems on their personal network sites. This gives a false, uh, impression that somehow this has now been approved by the district if they have their, their, the logos on there. Uh, District Employees and Directors should not state or imply that they speak for the district or district offices unless they've been expressly authorized to do so by the Board or the General Manager. Again, the main reason for this policy is to not stifle engagement, but to provide a safe environment for real dialogue, um, free from hate speech, profanity, and other hateful language. Um, one of the other, uh, common infractions that I see, which most of us here in this room wouldn't even think of, is that there's a lot of profanity on, profanity on social media. People use it in their personal social media, and so they get used to it, and so that ends up on our pages. And, um, this is something that probably here at MSWD, this is the most common thing that I would, would take down a post for, would be from profanity. Um, at the very end of the policy, you'll note also that there are some disclaimer informations, uh, reminders that, you know, social media is twenty-four seven, that's the nature of it. Um, but we don't have staff that's, that's monitoring necessarily social media twenty-four seven. Sometimes somebody will do a direct message or a post after hours, and I can't always get to it. Uh, we do have an agency that helps monitor, but there are pages, especially when you look at like the Facebook group pages, um, and also like Nextdoor posts, even with the monitoring software, those pages are very hard to monitor and to be on top of without manually going through and looking at those. So that, that's some of the information also, we just want to make sure the public knows and is aware, um, how we work with that. That's an overview of the policy, I would like to turn it back over, um, to President Martin, and he, the floor backed over to him, so in case he has specific questions from the Board members, we can address that.
Okay, thank you. Don't leave the bias, so, um, Ted, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Is there any problems right now, other than somebody posting, uh, advertising on, or, there is no problems.
Uh, good question, no, there is no problems right now, I've taken off maybe a total of five posts, um, since I've been here at the district, and like I said, most of those have always been profanity. There have been a couple of advertising posts, uh, where people want to promote products, and this is really just to give us a backing for the reasons why we take those posts down and not have it look like we are picking and choosing, you know, I took the post down because I don't agree with that business, no, it's because that business is not our business. Um, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the, excuse me. And that's the, the thing that I'm having a problem with is it seems like we're always coming, or not always, but in the last six months I've been here, at least two or three times, it's a new rule, the regulations have been made up for the employees. And sometimes, I'm just getting to the point now where why do we keep doing this? Um, if there's no problem, why are we creating, uh, something like this, spending staff time to, to do something that's not necessary?
Well, I will say that this will protect us legally from litigation, and that's probably the biggest reason and the factor behind why we would address, we would adopt something like this.
Well, you may not be, you probably are aware of the, uh, I, I talked with Brian about this. The, the video that came out on social media accusing the Water District of causing damage, that's still on social media. So my suggestion was to get a hold of the attorney and have him send a, a letter saying, hey, you're falsely accusing us. So we're not taking care of that, but we're gonna make rules and regulations for our employees. There's also, my other problem is, is that, you know, I, I asked for, for some things, and they're still not being done, and there's no accountability there within our own system here. I understand you want to protect the district, but what are we really doing? We're allowing somebody to continue to post stuff falsely accusing the district. We're not taking responsibility for some of the things if the director liked for information for one. So here we are with this, so. That's where I'm at, and as far as the next one that's coming up for the directors, I'll just let you know now, I answer to the Fair Political Practice People Commission, Fair Political Practice Commission. So I'm already under, under that, I have to follow the, uh, AAB twelve, the twelve thirty-four. So to have rules and regulations for the directors so that four directors can say, hey, you know, we think you broke this, and, and now we're gonna take you off of, of that committee or, or whatever, is just too much. So, I appreciate all the time and effort you put into this, I know it won't matter if I vote, vote no, I'm, it's probably gonna go through, but that's, that's my thoughts, and that's my feelings on it. Yeah, thank you.
Ivan?
Um, I would just like to say, um, I think this is very thorough, and one of the benefits of going to like CSDA, and we were able to see some times where other districts have had problems where, um, we can hopefully learn from their mistakes before it happens to us. So I'd rather have something and not need it than needed and not have it. Um, and then I just had a quick question. Um, under number ten, it has the, the line about the district logos and things. Um, just thinking of my social media, um, occasionally I'd post maybe at our ribbon breaking or groundbreaking for the, um, for the regional plant, if I was wearing a polo, is that something that I shouldn't be posting? And something that I should go and remove, or?
I think you're fine there, and what I can do is I can word, wordsmith that a little bit and say prominently displaying so that, because I believe you should be able to put some, if I'm an employee and I'm wearing an MSW shirt and I'm out doing something, I think you should be able to post that, so, um, I'll, I'll add the word prominently.
Okay. Um, and then another question of just like, I know the disclaimer that you have. No, I don't see it. Um, is that something, even if it's like a simple photo of, I'm here at the groundbreaking, that I should put that disclaimer still?
If you're a representative of the district, you should.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay.
I don't really have many comments, I think it's pretty well thought out. Um, uh, my understanding as far as the logos was not so much wearing the shirt as it is posting it, uh, like, do we have the seventieth logo prompt, like, throwing it there and then speaking on behalf of the district, and I think that's something to be concerned about, obviously, and so this is a way to kind of protect the district. I do want to just address Director Meyer Hoffman regarding that other video, and it's, um, this, my understanding is this only applies to our, the district's social media, so we have no control over what other people post on their own.
I, I understand this.
Yeah.
The, the, the difference between the two, but the point is, is that yes, if somebody's making false allegations against the district, we do have an attorney that can put a stop.
Right, but we, but we don't have, we don't have the ability to just take it off.
I understand, okay, just.
That's it.
Thank you.
Amber?
Thank you, um, first, I wanted to commend you for bringing this to the table proactively versus reactively, I think that's very important that we, we really focus on shifting to that in the writings of these policies. Um, also, I, I, and I mentioned this to you just before we started, um, on our social media pages, whatever we use, whether it be Facebook, Instagram, et cetera, on the homepage, I would like it to state who it is that is speaking on behalf, if it's you, if it's your department, if you, it's you and one designate, and then if anyone else, the GM, a board member, an employee is given permission to post, that they then put their name there in addition to MSWD so that the public can know who is responsible for these posts under MSWD, and can know that it's being posted with district approval and with facts versus opinions, or maybe an employee that didn't have all the facts and, and made a post, I would like the public to know that these are um, ordained posts, so to speak. Um, and then also, um, uh, sorry, I have to read my notes here. You several times mentioned the laws that need to be followed, and that if it's determined someone violates the policy, you also said you were going to be linking this policy, are you going to be linking those referenced rules clearly so the public can know very clearly what rules we're referring to? It doesn't have to be literally copy and paste it, it can be links to those legal sites, but I think that it's important that if we're gonna provide this policy and we continually review or refer to ways that it can be violated, we need to be very clear as to what violates those rules. Um, the only other thing, and, and you did note, note it under, um, page three of six on eight, on a letter H, that we will never promote, endorse, or oppose any political groups, candidates, or ballot measures. Um, I also think it's very important that that would include any counter-messengers to any campaigning comments made, even if it may not state specifically a candidate's name that you're posting that information in opposition to. I think that during an election, nothing that could be constituted as support or not support one way or the other should be allowed to be posted. I don't know if there's a way to better disseminate that verbally on the policy. And other than that, I think it was a great job, thank you very much for all the hard work that went into it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I also noticed that the, uh, the city is going through a similar policy with respect to when they can wear the polo shirts with the city's logo on it. Uh, they made that very restrictive, they didn't want uh, members of the council or employees showing up for a political rally or something like that, giving the impression that the city supported that candidate when it was really the individual. So they did, they did come down and make a change there as well, so. Again, thank you for the work that was done on that.
Well, thank you all, and I will bring back a revised version for you to review on Monday, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item nine, Resolution Twenty-two-three-sixteen, the Windows Resolution twenty-three dash zero five. Edgeline Solutions for the Water District Personal Rules and Regulations. Harden, who's gonna handle it?
Yeah, well, I think Oriana was going to connect in, uh, is she here, Dory? Oriana, are you here?
No, sir, she is not.
Yeah, then we'll do it on Monday.
I, I can take, I can take it, I've got the presentation ready to go. So yes, this is updating the MSWD Personal Rules and Regulations. Um, this provides guidance and information related to the district's policies, procedures, benefits, in written format. Uh, the responsible staff was Oriana and V, V is on the, on the line, so she will be able by the way, can people, can you see my, um, I just realized you may not be able to see my you can, but I don't think they can see it on, um.
We can't see anything on Zoom.
They can't see it on there, that's what I thought.
Now we see something.
Now, can you see it?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, sorry about that. Uh, V is on the line to answer any questions. Um, the staff is recommending to adopt Resolution Twenty-three-sixteen, amending the previous resolutions pertaining to the employee handbook. I have set this presentation up simply to show what the changes are that was in the document, so if there are any changes, we can go through it line by line, or we can just ask the Board to ask questions, while V is here, it's completely up to the Board's pleasure how to handle this. But what is in the document as Exhibit A and the changes are on the screen, so we can visually see them everyone at the same time.
Okay.
Are there any questions, uh, on specific line items?
Any questions?
I have lots.
Okay, Robert?
Uh, Oriana's not here, so I, I'm trying to get at, a couple of these are just, I'm trying to figure out the rationale behind this, okay? So, um, I'll just kind of go down. Oh, sorry, I'll go, I'll go down kind of what I have. Um, and so when we get to Rule Seven, I see D, Coordination of Benefits, okay? Now typically, worker's comp is not taxable, and in some cases, it can pay an amount that is up, close to what a worker gets net-wise. And I'm curious as to why we're forcing them to use paid leave to make up the difference between what they're getting paid on work comp and their gross salary.
Well, using paid, substituting paid leave for unpaid leave, uh, for any portion of, of the leave that's unpaid is generally recommended because that is an effective way to get employees to use down their accrued leave, so you can take it off your books. And in the case of specifically workers' comp, we have had situations in which employees are out for some period of time before their workers' comp kicks in, and we're asking them to substitute paid leave for any portion of their workers' comp leave that is unpaid. And to the extent that they are getting workers' compensation wage replacement benefits, the district will make up the difference, but at no time will they ever make more than one hundred percent of their gross normal wages. It's really an effective way for the district, for all employers actually, to get employees to use down their accrued leave.
Um, okay, I can understand, uh, I have a problem with it, I'll just be honest, I just think regardless, forcing people to take vacation pay to make up a difference when they might be okay is just not something I'm comfortable with, so I, it may be an effective way to get them to use their vacation, but, um, it, it just seems punitive to me. Um, on twenty-five, uh, personal time shall be considered unscheduled vacation. So a previous revision, uh, that we made allowed employees to collect overtime if vacation was scheduled, so. Um, this would, uh, making this change, does this permit them to collect overtime based on the previous revision?
No, it does not.
Okay, um, and then E-three B?
Yes.
I'm a little unsure about this, so when we say, uh, a, a district does not receive sufficient information from an employee, what is considered sufficient information?
This is meant to address the situations in which the employee just calls off and doesn't give us any reason for why he or she is off of work. And then again, in an effort to try and get employees to use down their accrued leave so that it, it doesn't create a, um, a big liability in our books. And the law allows us to require employees to substitute, substitute paid leave for any unpaid leave, as, as we mentioned. And so the reason here for substituting vacation is, the district actually does get employees who very quite often miss work, don't tell us why, there's an absence on the book. And if we allow them to use accrued sick leave for an unexplained absence, we could be compromising the district's ability to properly administer sick leave, sick leave is not required to be paid out when employees leave the district's employ. Um, the law is very clear, employees get their vacation paid out when they leave, but they don't get their sick leave paid out. Therefore, sick leave has to be used only for those purposes that are stated, excuse me, under the law, and that is to tend to an employee's own illness, to tend to a family member's illness, or to seek treatment, uh, to go to the doctor's appointments, et cetera. If employees do not give us one of those reasons for calling off work, we can't require them to substitute paid sick leave for the unexplained absence because then that would compromise the integrity of the sick leave, and employees could claim later they were using sick leave just as vacation, so now I want you to pay out all my sick leave when I leave. So Oriana and I caught that in the policy, and so we changed it from sick leave to vacation.
Okay, and in the case of a problematic employee, uh, you cannot administer discipline as long as they have sick leave, if they call out sick, and, and it's multiple times, as long as they have sick leave and, under California law, that doesn't really count from a disciplinary standpoint, so are we not kind of giving them more opportunities for this by not using the sick leave?
More opportunities for what, for not calling in when they're, when they're?
For, for multiple absences.
Oh, well, the problem is multiple absences happen quite often already. So, um, again, this is a way to comply with the law, A, you're absolutely right, if they're out and they're using sick leave, we can't discipline them. But if they're gonna be out and they're not gonna give us a reason, and we require them to substitute vacation, that gives us the ability to reprimand them, because there's no law that says vacation is protected leak. So I think what it does is the opposite.
Okay. Um, so E-four I, so we talk about, uh, disciplinary procedures should be standard, well, are subject to discipline at the discretion of the General Manager. Should the, any disciplinary action be standard across the board to avoid any claims of preferential treatment?
It is, and in practice, uh, I will give kudos to your HR department, Oriana is very thorough when she, before she ever recommends disciplining an employee for excessive absences, she really does her homework, sits down with employees, determine explanations for all of their leave. And we try, we are as consistent as possible with the policy that we're given. But in practice, um, employees' situations are wildly divergent, they're all over the place. You can have an employee who's coming off of, of twelve weeks of, uh, coming off of of twelve weeks of uh, family medical leave and then immediately wants to take several more weeks of uh, baby bonding leave, or now she needs sick leave because uh, her son is sick. And we never are really able to get to the real reason of why an employee is sick for, for the reasons you spoke earlier. If they are using their sick leave, they're using their, their family medical leave, those are all protected leave. So we can't force them to say, oh, I lied, my son wasn't sick, or we can't touch them. So we have to give management, in this case, the general manager, some discretion to be able to investigate and determine why it is an employee's absent. So if an employee is using sick leave, we can't do anything, as you said earlier. But if the employee is using excessive amounts of personal leave, vacation, uh, uh, et cetera, we want to give the general manager the discretion to look into those situations and determine why this employee is taking more time off than he or she is working.
Okay, um, I just have a couple more. Sorry. Um, uh, back up to, I kind of skipped seventeen. Um, it was fringe benefits and and this is, uh, you, I, you may not be aware of the previous conversation, so I'm gonna address this kind of to Brian. So rule seventeen, we had talked about this. There was a proposal to pay employees to not take benefits uh, when they don't need them. The proposal was five hundred dollars per month and um, we voted that down for various reasons. At the time, I said, I don't have a problem if people don't need the benefits, they don't take them. So under the, the example that we were given at that time, the state of the district's cost was at fifteen hundred dollars per month and that the increase in benefits cost to the district would be thirty-six hundred dollars per month. And the example that we had back then was that if four employees did not take benefits, and apparently there were four employees that did not, um, it would actually, uh, that was the justification for paying them and we would actually not lose that thirty-six, it would cost us less than that thirty-six hundred. So i- if you take those numbers and you have these four people that don't need benefits, if we don't do a hundred percent participation, requiring them to prove that they have benefits, but um, if only three employees opt out, it saves us nine hundred dollars. And if four employees opt out, we're up to twenty-four hundred dollars in savings. So I'm kind of curious as to why we are not allowing people to opt out. If we were gonna do it uh, be, and pay them, why are we not opting out, letting them opt out and not pay them?
As I recall, there was an issue with JPIA looking at this issue, the same reason, for the same reasons we just described. And they are in the process of evaluating their program as a whole. And we were going to possibly change our program that would then hinder our program down the road once JPI caught, kept Aqua JPIA caught up. Therefore, we pulled the item waiting for Aqua JPIA to actually show or tell us what they're planning to do. So we just, I don't know that we remove, we stopped the process, we just postponed it to get better direction from Aqua JPIA.
So once, once we get that direction from JPIA, we can bring this up for discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and then the last thing is, um, on twenty-eight, and I really could like some clarification here. Um, final paychecks is an employee who voluntarily resigns will receive their final wages at the next scheduled payday. Now I I don't stay up on all labor law, but it, it used to be, um, labor code section two oh two was that if they gave more than seventy-two hours notice, they were given their final check on the final day. If they gave no notice, it's seventy-two hours to give that. Has that changed?
No, Director, um, the district as a public agency is exempted from labor code section two oh two and two oh three.
Okay.
And we're covered by federal law. So federal law allows us to pay them by the next regularly scheduled payday.
Okay, so on that, it's kind of a tangential, but so, um, uh, it. Are we covered, uh, as a district, are we exempt from all California labor or just certain sections?
Just those sections that specifically state they don't apply to public agencies. Or conversely, if they specifically state that they do apply to public agencies, those are the ones that we should be concerned with. Most of the labor code provisions in the two hundred, sections two hundred through two ninety-nine, uh, the district would be exempt from those.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
No, I think, I don't know. Yeah, there's a lot of work going into this and, and, uh, I'm sorry, did I skip, I'm, I'm sorry.
I just have a couple because Robert pretty much handled all of my questions with the exception of just a couple things. Um, if we could go back to, hold on one second. Um. It's on page seventeen, but it's section seventeen-one, again, where we just were, but on the second page. In parentheses, it states non-protected leave. Do we have in our policy available to our employees the definition of non-protected leave?
Yes, it should be somewhere in the handbook because, um, Oriana, Oriana and I worked on it. Non-protective leave is leave that's not protected by a leave statute such as FMLA, CFRA, pregnancy disability leave, uh, et cetera.
Okay.
Sick leave is a protected leave.
Perfect, thank you very much. I don't have the employee handbook, so I don't have the ability to check myself, so I'm sorry I have to ask. Uh, also, E three B, back to um, the definition of sufficient information, I, I do think um, as Director Griffith had touched on, I, I do think that we need to be a little careful with such vague terminology. Um, sufficient information could be determined a lot of different ways, especially if an employee feels that their reason might be a protected uh, reason that they shouldn't have to share, maybe because of what their understanding of HIPAA, whether it's correct or not, I think that it would eliminate question or discussion in the future if the sufficient information was actually defined. Um, the other comment I had, um, EC six.
Yes.
I have never heard of only having sick leave for fifteen minutes. Why is it not one hour at a time?
Um, the law allows you to break it down to fifteen minute increments, and this is actually the district being very generous. Some employers require two hours. Um, and this is because we do have employers, my understanding from Oriana is we do have employees who need to, you know, just run across the street, get medication, things like that. And we want to give them the flexibility to say, hey, we're not gonna dock your pay by fifteen minutes, just substitute your sick time for that.
Hmm, and they don't do that on their break?
They should. But again, it it is a protected activity and they are allowed to use their sick leave for that, and we are allowed to set a a minimum increment, and this is the increment that the district has decided on.
And the, the decision made, uh, I'm assuming by Oriana and the district, uh, for fifteen minutes, is there a, a financial benefit to that increment being so small or?
Director, I'm not really sure, um, but I can certainly follow up with Oriana and find out why it's fifteen minutes and not thirty or or two hours.
Yeah, an hour, uh, yeah, that would make sense to me. Thank you. It, it just, when, going back to your previous comments of how we're trying to make sure that we're encouraging them to use sick leave for sick leave and vacation leave for vacation leave to then allow them to potentially have extended lunches every day of the week by fifteen minutes for this reason seems to not really go with what we're still trying to do on the other side of things.
Fair enough.
To explain better why I'm concerned. Um, and then the last thing is under, um, B eleven E, um, educational daycare purposes leave.
Yes.
Um, so it's saying that they get, the parents or caregivers of a child will get up to forty hours unpaid for things that are specifically listed here, which made sense. But then it also said that employees must substitute accrued vacation for purposes of a planned absence under this policy. Can you explain the, the difference between a planned absence under this policy where they're attending children's school stuff versus the forty hours that are applying to the school obligations or daycare obligations?
Yes, so they get for, up to forty hours in a year to tend, to take time off of work to attend to any of these issues that are stated in that policy, and that's the law, by the way. Um, but those forty hours are unpaid. So again, in an effort to get employees to use down their accrued leave, we are telling them that they should substitute any accrued paid leave such as vacation. And sick could potentially apply here too, because it does allow employees to take time off because a child is sick and has been sent home from school. So they can substitute their paid accrued leave, and many of them prefer to for any unpaid leave that, um, they need to take under this policy.
Okay, and you're using the word should in what you're explaining, but the policy is saying must. So I guess my question would be more specific when it's saying a planned absence. So you, you as a parent are asked to go on a child's field trip and it's a whole day thing because that's planned in advance versus being called from the school, you're saying they must use vacation time for something like that versus if they get a call from the school nurse and they have to leave, they can use the unpaid forty hours. Am I understanding that correctly?
Um, you are, but in practice, in practice, how it's applied is if you tell the employer I need to take leave next week, uh, in order to go to a field trip with my son's school, yes, substitute any accrued vacation. But if, for example, you have to, you're called out of work half a day because, uh, your child is sent home from school, you could potentially, that could potentially be covered by sick leave. And I think the reason it's not specifically covered is we wanted to give HR the discretion to work with employees in substituting their paid leave so that none of this is punitive against the employees.
Okay, that does it for me. I appreciate your clarifications and thank you for all the work you and Oriana put into this.
You're very welcome and thank you.
Yes, and, uh, these are very complex issues and I'm glad I don't have to be involved in the day-to-day decision-making with respect of who gets what and how often, so. I would be lost, okay? Anything else from staff? Joel, Pardon?
Nothing, Ryan? No.
Okay. Moving on to item ten, authorized general manager, Paul Duff, resolution twenty-two-three dash eighteen, and rule classification plan for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four, we'll be doing that on Monday. Yes. Item eleven, Association of California Water Agencies Committee nominations for the twenty-twenty-four twenty-five term is recommended to consider nominating candidate or candidates of outstanding committees. And if you go to the packet, um, there under analysis, it lists the various committees and stuff. If, if any of the board members are interested in doing that, uh, shoot me an email. We'll bring it up for nominations, uh, I'll bring it up for nominations at Monday's meeting, and then we vote on it on each of those. So we've got the Agriculture Committee, Business Development Committee, Communications Committee, Energy Committee, Federal Affairs Committee, Finance Committee, Groundwater Affairs Committee, Local Government Committee, Leadership Committee, State Legislative Committee, and Water Management Committee, Water Quality Committee. So as I said, if anybody's interested in that, in any one of those committees, shoot me an email and we'll open it up for nominations. Um, and then a vote on, on Monday. Are there any questions or comments? Yeah, ever?
So we don't get to nominate our fellow board members for things we think they should go do for us?
Yes, you can nominate your fellow board members, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I, I, I just wanted to make a couple small comments for us as a board to just consider in looking at these committees. Seeing as how we don't currently have lobbyists at the state level, I think it may behoove us all to really consider, um, someone or ones going into the state legislative and local government committees
Okay.
in regards to that. And, um, state legislation is of course always important. I just wanted to have everybody think about that and look at their schedules and see if they could find time to.
I'll be looking forward to your email, uh, volunteering for that.
Yeah, I'm sure, right? Thank you.
Robert?
Uh, I have no question.
Okay, uh, Ted? I'm gonna look into it, okay, considering the one for agriculture. Okay, all right. Water is being, uh. Go ahead and shoot me a, shoot me an email and I'll be sure and bring it up, uh, on the agenda, uh, during Monday's meeting either. Okay.
Can I, can I just add one thing though, along the line of what Director Duff is saying is that, um, I have staff people that want, that might want to participate, especially in what you just pointed out, and I, like Marion is expressed interest in the Government Affairs to, uh, getting on one of these committees and that, that'll help for the same reason you just pointed out.
That actually answers my question because I was under the impression it was only board members. So our staff can be on this committee as well. That is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Okay, moving on to item twelve, resolution twenty-two-three dash seventeen. Running, running wrong for his dedication to service to Mission Springs Water District. Is recommended to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash seventeen, running running wrong for eighteen years of dedication and service to Mission Springs Water District. And we'll be addressing that on Monday as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion, uh, item thirteen, Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility is Steve, uh, Leonard on the line?
Steve is, is here.
Okay.
Well, Steve, you wanna take it from there?
Yes, I'd be happy to, uh, General Manager Wallen. Uh, good afternoon, President Martin and, um, Directors. Um, I have a presentation as usual for your viewing pleasure today. Um, just give me one second to get that fired up. Okay. So on the treatment plant itself, um, the SBR tank channels, these are the channels that will bring the flows in and distribute it through each of the four treatment tanks. Um, the contractor finished most of the walls on there and started working on the pipe penetrations. On the left-hand side, you can see the forms being stripped for those channel walls that were poured after the main, um, SBR tank walls were completed. Um, in addition, the SBR tank catwalks were completed over the SBR tanks and then on, kind of moving from the right side of the screen to the left, um, they're putting in the supports to form the catwalks that go over the aerated sludge storage tanks, which are the tanks to our left-hand side. Um, within the SBR tanks themselves, um, you can see that, again, the catwalks have been completed across the SBR tanks. Um, that's where maintenance activities will, will take place, where operations staff can walk through and visually inspect the plant, conduct any maintenance. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the, this is all the air piping, it's aluminum piping that will provide air to the microbes to help them do their job and complete the treatment process. And then on the right-hand side is the, uh, the scum troughs, which will take any of the, any of this, the leftover, um, fats, oils, greases that kind of gravitate to the top of the, the basins, and we'll be able to get rid of that and discharge it and treat it properly. Um, in addition, around the SBR tanks and throughout the site, um, they've begun completing kind of site grading and backfill. Um, so if you recall, when we did our tour, our, our plant tour back in early May, um, where the ground's at now, we were about fifteen, twenty feet below that. Um, all that's been brought up to grade. This is roughly the final grade of where it will be at, um, in the future, and you can see we're right at grade with the building now, um, around the SBR tanks. Um, in addition, um, as a treatment plant site, we cannot allow any flows to come onsite or flow offsite. So part of that protection from any sheet flow that may come onsite is a perimeter drainage system. Um, the contractor began work on that. It was already graded some time ago, but now they're putting in, um, riprap to line those channels to make sure that it, it can withstand any kind of, um, flows that may or may not come to the site. Um, in addition, the tank affluent piping, so this is a twenty-four inch ductile iron pipe that will take the treated wastewater down to the spreading ponds at the south end of the site for, um, infiltration. Um, the remainder of that and the connection to the SBR tanks was completed this last month. Um, finally, the Edison interconnection, these are the two main, um, meter service panels and transformers that will be placed on site. This is the underground vault and conduit connection vaults um, where everything's gonna interconnect with Edison and ultimately go into the building to the operations building and then go out to the site to feed it with power. Um, most of the conduit work has been done up to and in front of the operations building, and these are the, again, where all the switchgear will be placed um, for Edison's equipment. Um, in addition, we finally got some reprieve with, um, the high wind, uh, believe it or not. Um, we had a few days, so the contractor was able to resume work on putting up the exterior siding on the building. Um, this is the, uh, south side of the building. And then on the west side of the building that kind of faces the wind, they were able to resume and, and complete, um, the siding and roofs around the vestibules um, on the west side of the building and the kind of two windows you see here, those will be, that's where the control room, um, and laboratory will be ultimately. Um within the building, the contractor continued working on completing kind of outfitting and finishes on the building. On the picture on the left, they're working on doing some painting and finishing off the uh um the drywall. And on the right hand side of the screen, they're putting in pads for the blowers that will send to the air, the compressed air through those air pipes that we looked at a few minutes ago. Um this is the maintenance room. And in the maintenance room, they've uh completed almost all construction. You can see we have finished walls on the left side. At the top of the screen, we have the finished cable tray. The air ducting has been completed for the HVAC system. They've pressure washed and cleaned the floors and they're putting on a a sealant onto the concrete. Um and this this room's pretty much wrapped up um as far as construction goes for operation. Um inside of the dewatering room, this is where the belt filter press will be. The belt filter press um squeezes out uh any any fluids from the cake, the leftover stuff that's treated. And then it goes into this loadout conveyor. So the contractor got this loadout conveyor installed. And there will be a a dump truck or a a long bed truck that backs into this building and we'll be able to load it with the slugs. This ultimately gets hauled off site and um managed elsewhere. On the conveyance line, um the contractor has completed about fifteen hundred feet through the end of June, uh maybe closer to two thousand feet, starting at the treatment plant that gets us roughly north to where the district solar facility ends. Um and they're putting in um thirty three and thirty six inch VCP pipe. You can see that they have shields where they're currently working. They have their gravel bedding, pipe bedding in, and they're flying in another another component or another piece of VCP will ultimately be a manhole at this location. Um these two photos highlight uh the beginning steps of a manhole. Um on the left hand side, the contractor is pouring the manhole base. And on the right hand side, that's what the finished base looks like at the bottom of a manhole. And again, this is for a thirty six inch VCP, so it's a pretty substantial um manhole base and it's about a s- uh five foot diameter. Uh regarding the funding update, um as you're aware, that we got our approved by um FBA final budget agreement for the phase one treatment plant at the end of May. Um we worked hand in hand with the state to get our first invoice prepared and submitted, and that was turned in by June thirty. And we expect payment back from the State Water Resource Control Board um later this month or early August. Um I did attempt to reach out to the state this week for an update to see if they had any questions, um but I have not gotten that response back yet. Um on the phase two conveyance line, the FBA that was submitted towards the end of May, and we have not heard any um updates or received any questions or comments regarding that um final budget approval package for phase two. Um and with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, Amber? Robert? Ted?
I'm still hearing the same thing. We never received any money.
I'm sorry, Dr. Marhoff, and I I didn't hear that.
We we never received any money at all.
No, uh um our request went in. Um the request total was um I believe twenty three point four million, twenty two point four million. Um so that's in with the state and they're processing it now.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I hope to report back in August that we have, we have received that payment.
I I hope to hear that. Be be a nice change.
We all do.
Ivan? Okay. Moving on to the Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update. Uh Steve, you gonna take that as well?
No, he's gonna do it.
Okay, Brian?
Hold on just one second here. For some reason, it did not share. Now we should be able to share. There we go. Yes, uh Critical S- Critical Services Center uh update. One of the questions that we talked about before uh at our last board meeting at the part of the budget process was we talked about the Jerusalem cricket. Um going back to an overlay that dated back to nineteen ninety six. Um at this point, we have not made a decision about what to do with the building at that location. Uh we sort of left it as a discussion topic that to build on that site based on environmental review and discussions with could uh the Coachella Valley Conservate Conservancy District, we would have to purchase eighty eight, sixty acres. Uh right now, we've not found any available land to date. Most of the overlay is in tribal or farmland property. So we have still not made a decision on that. One of the questions that I kept getting from, just to summarize, is what is our plan B? Or do we have a plan B? So to share with you what our plan B would be, I felt it necessary for the new board members to go back to where we were in in January of twenty twenty and let you know how we laid the foundation to get to where we are. So then I can say these are our plan Bs because they fit within that definition. So please bear with me as I try to get through these slides, going all the way back to January twenty twenty. Uh we started talking about the history of this existing building. We started talking about the budgeted uh corporate yard improvements and also available properties that were along Palm Drive. Those were the big discussion items dating back to twenty twenty. The building history, uh we've occupied this space since nineteen eighty one. I believe this building was completed in eighty eight. Uh even back in twenty twen- twenty oh six, we realized that we were outgrowing this facility and that we needed to look at, looking at another facility. We started talking about the exact same two bunch palms location even back then. At that time, it was a little bit smaller. We were looking at forty eight employees. It was going to include both the corporate yard and our administrative building. Because of the economy, we stopped working on that particular location. However, still coming, once we started, the economy started coming back, two thousand sixteen and seventeen, we realized we were outgrowing this building. So we looked at how, what would it cost to do some renovation at this building as well as the annex next door? Um basically, it was between four, four and a half million dollars to do that rehab. When we started looking at contractors to build it, we ran into a firm called APS. They said, well, for that amount of money, you could build next door and get roughly the same square footage. So we started looking next door. What would that building look like? What would the layout be? We we actually put in the budget six point five million dollars for a new building next door. What that would look like, in front of you, you see an administrative building that's roughly eleven thousand five hundred square feet. It has public parking to the east. It has secured parking in the south. And it's basically on this cell phone tower between here and Acatia just next door. Going back to the corporate yard and what improvements we're looking there. Uh some of these, at this time, we were looking at shower facilities. We still only have one shower at the corporate yard. All the pavement reconditioning uh still is necessary. Uh the office space for the wastewater has been taken care of. But we still have a estimated budget at that location to do the block wall and other improvements of between half a million and a million dollars at that location. Also, we were continuing to look at Palm Drive. You'll be, see a better map moving forward, but this is when we started looking at different properties. Uh the one of probably most known is the fourteen eight six six Palm Drive, which is on the right of your screen. It's a seven point five acres uh next to the existing park. What we started talking about at this particular time was we have a current plan. We have a new building next door. We have corporate yard improvements. We have them budgeted between seven and seven and a half million. Thinking about our situation, uh the fact that we're divided, we travel a lot between the two facilities, office and field staff, some of the training has to be moved to one place or another. There's people, opportunities for people not to be accountable because they're not seeing their boss on a daily basis. We start talking about how, what happens if we can bring them together. If we pull our resources, pull the cor- pull some things together, what would that look like? That's what came to the second column, which is the corporate yard option, where we would combine the budgeted amounts. And what would that look like at that particular location? We also then looked at, well, what would it, what would we, what would the value be of this particular site? This building, the annex building, every, all the property we have here, we would keep the cell phone tower, but what would this be worth if we put it on the open market? The price we got was between one and, or the estimate we got was between one and one and a half million dollars. So when you look at these tables, you'll see what the, what the description of that option is. If there's any property acquisition, what is budgeted, that one of the benefits, and then you see the potential compensation. Then looking at the Palm Drive, this is pretty consistent where you have a property acquisition. It, what, depending on the property, that would be added to the corporate yard option. Same benefits of bringing everybody together and the same benefit of compensation for selling these second street properties. We updated these costs in September twenty twenty. There were several presentations, but again, trying to give you a quick brief history. We upgrade, we updated those estimates. What you see here is the estimates related to the, in bold, the old estimates is below. The one significant change on this is we started looking at other MSWD properties, specifically the airport property as we reference it. It is a large piece of ground that we have, but there is no road, there is no sewer, and there is no water. So when you look at the offsite improvements category, that's all the way on the right in the darker color, offsite improvement, sanitary water, et cetera, that's specific to that property. It was between, and other properties that we were looking at, it was between two and ten million dollars. So now that particular price has gone up to ten to twenty three. So it's specific to one location for the most part. Fast forwarding to January twenty twenty one, we continue to update cost. And then we were starting to focus in on two options, one at the corporate yard. We will call it the Ucaipa Police Department concept, because basically it's the same building that they have for similar use. They have the police department on one side and they have a public park on the other. It it was one of those things that seemed to look right. We also then focused on the property next to the existing park because we could run a easement behind the park to connect both and still use the corporate yard as it is today, but be connected to a building. Excuse me. So again, continuing to update these costs. Again, just showing the sequence of how the price kept going up as we kept looking at this, getting more information. You see that now the current plan, which started out at seven million dollars, is now over eleven. The corporate yard option became a little bit cheaper because we didn't have to do property acquisition and we were selling this particular site. And then Palm Drive and other MSWD properties continued to go up. At this point, it was between thirteen and twenty four million dollars. What were we looking at at the corporate yard? What you have here is you have the park parking lot. Now, keep in mind, we were working with the city to find out if if they were acceptable to this, and at the time they were. So trying to utilize as many structures that we had, we were going to be relocating the fuel station along uh Park Drive. We were going to then be having a one story building at fifteen thousand square feet. That's what we were looking at at this location. So it seemed appropriate at this location as well. What would that look like if with, at the park, if you were in the parking lot? This is a win- rendering we did with Hull Architecture, this being what it looks like now. This being what it could look like if we built at that location. Moving, fast forwarding in a month or a second month, our focus did start really to be on Palm Drive, not on the corporate yard. So we started looking into that at the time. Another Palm Drive location at Claire, that is now, I believe, Green Day Estates or Green Day Village. It sold. And the property that we were looking at, which was at the corner fourteen eight sixty six, started to go through the escrow process, all but only for half the property. So we were looking at seven and a half acres at the corner. And we had put actually a conditional offer in on that. Also, in March, we then started going for architectural services, knowing that we may potentially be purchasing property. We then used the real estate broker surfaces, surfaces as well. Uh both of those closed on April sixth. Also adding to the presentation, we realized that if we went offsite and had some of these other properties, secret would be an issue. So we want to make sure to talk about that and put the timing issues of that. April twenty twenty one, we were reported to the board that we had sixteen architectural firms, zero responses for real estate. And at that point, the two bunch palms trail site started to be discussed again. Here's just a quick overview of the properties that we were really looking at along Palm. You have the one that's right beside the park, the three and a half acres. It, the reason the price, it went to three point four is once they started looking at the right of way take related to Palm Drive, it was going to be reduced in size. You see the point nine million, that would be the cost of the property. They do not have sewer service, so the smaller number or the less, the less bold number is the actual offsite cost. Just continuing to look up and down Palm, there was another lever, eleven acre site we were looking at. There was also a site uh just north of Ironwood that we were looking at. They had water and sewer, so there's zero offsite cost, one point six million. And then, of course, the corporate yard. At this time, we're still trying to keep a lot of the facilities that were there to try to reduce as most cost as we could. Two and a half acres, zero onsite ca- offsite cost. We have water and sewer at that location and we already own the property. And now, starting to move forward, July one or July twenty twenty one, we had a workshop on July one where we did approve the contract with Renewal Clark. Um and we were specifically put in the provisions of that contract to look at the two locations, the one at fourteen eight sixty six Palm Drive and the two bunch palms trail. The property at fourteen eight sixty six on Palm Drive continued to be delayed. Therefore, we removed it for consideration and basically a two week period where then we then gave direction to Renewal Clark to only focus on the two bunch palms location. Therefore, they only actually evaluated one site. So if we chose to look at a different site, we would not have to incur additional cost of that contract, just as a side note. Then in November twenty twenty one, as Renewal Clark was doing a space analysis, they found that the size of that building was similar to what we would need long term. Therefore, after that tour, the positive reinforcement of the board was direct Renewal Clark to use that as the basis of design. And that is how we got the design that we have today. So the question is, if we decide to move off the two bunch palms, what is the next, what is the plan B and C, if you will? What you see next to this is you see basically a template. I apologize, again, trying to put stuff together just to show for scaling purposes, will things work, will they not work? We looked at three locations for today's meeting. We looked at the existing location here. We looked at the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility site and the corporate yard. The easy one is the Nancy Wright facility. We roughly have fifteen acres between the solar field to the north. That's actually the main site, the plant to the south. Unfortunately, I don't have an aerial photography of that, so I can't put it in here. So I just had to use the the PDF of the plans. Nineteenth goes between our solar facility and what would be the new CSC location. And then Little Morongo would be to your right. It fits there perfectly. You see a lot of available space around it. Again, we were looking to develop roughly eight acres. The vacant space around it totals about six and a half acres. So again, that's the easy answer to put, we could exec- pick the facility up and put it at that location. Unfortunately, the easy no from that perspective is probably this facility. There's only about two and a half acres here. Why the big building, well, the the admin building would work here. The parking becomes a little bit of an issue. Obviously, we would have some issues with grading because there's different grades on different straits between first and second. And then, of course, it's, the site is too small to accommodate the operations center. So some of the things that we were looking at when we were going back to twenty twenty was trying to bring everybody together, this site would not allow that. The last one is the corporate yard. The corporate yard is what you hadn't, you heard me mention, it has about two and a half acres. That is specific to the corporate yard itself. However, when we were back in twenty twenty, we were also having issues with the ponds. The Wright facility was not under construction yet, wasn't even talked about going to construction, or we were talking about it, but it wasn't even bidding at this point. So now that we're sped, splitting the flows, now that we have better control of our solids going to our ponds, i.e. the flushable wipes and things of that nature. Unfortunately, for the board members, it's right behind, let me see if I can move this. One of the things down at the yard in this, I couldn't get it all on one screen, the green pond that you see there actually can be moved to the east and out of the way of that half of the, of that page. The pond below it could be removed from service. I've worked with Lee and Andy and hit their staff, the wastewater staff, they've talked about. We could actually take that pond out of service, relocate everything. It sort of lines up with some of the improvements we've talked about doing. We've always talked about putting a block wall to pers- to better separate ourselves and the the park as well as cleaning up the tamarisk trees along Park Lane there and cleaning that area and putting up a better fence. So there's a lot of things that this actually allows us to do that we were going to do anyway, and it better establishes the right of way as the city is going to be doing very soon when they start talking about Riverside County building across the street. So from that perspective, this is an option. So at this particular point, that's the history of what we've been doing for the last couple of years. We've, really what we're looking for, the next steps. And I hate, I usually like to come to the board with an actual recommendation, but I just don't have one. The question I kept receiving was, what's our plan B? Do we even have a plan B? This presentation was in in hopes of showing that, yes, we have a plan B, even a plan C, if we decide to move off the if we decide to move off the two bunch palms location. Don't have to make a decision today. We can talk about it on Monday. We can have the weekend. We can even wait until August. I just wanted to let you know that we are looking at other options. But we haven't moved forward with any of them, only because we haven't received board direction. So that concludes my report.
What I have at this, at this point is uh, is the location that we had uh, planned on doing initially. Is that dead in the water right now on there? My understanding was we're still negotiating whether or not we could put the 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 facility there uh, and and whether or not it would be okay, considering the multi-species habitat land. Uh, so is it dead in the water or is it still workable at least so far?
The best way I can characterize that is there is an option. We'd have to find sixty acres to mitigate the construction of the six acres in addition to using what the city already has. They would be the lead agency when this plan goes to the Conservancy District for approval. It's an open space. It would require a change in use permit, but it would also have to, we'd have to mitigate the cricket, even though the cricket was not found there. It's part of an overlay that was in nineteen ninety-six that we cannot change.
So we would have to, we would have to buy sixty acres somewhere and turn it over to the multi-species habitat?
Yes, not only would we buy it, but before we would, we would condition, conditionally ask that we have our environmentalists to go make sure that the habitat that is there. Now, it's got to be in the overlay, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's inhabitable or could be by the cricket. So they have to approve that the habitat could sustain the cricket. And then if it could, then we could buy the property and then disturb six acres.
If we have to buy the property, that significantly increases the cost of the.
It does, it does. And the set and the difficult thing about that is the overlay goes across two major land owners. One, the tribe, which is we, I don't think we can purchase land. We can do a land lease, but not a purchase. So we can't donate anything. And the other one would be the windmill farms. And those windmill farms are very expensive to try to purchase for obvious reasons. So in reality, I'm not saying that it's no, I'm just saying it's very unlikely or going to be very, very expensive to build on that particular facility based on what Dodson has told us and our environmental staff, as well as conversations with the Conservation District.
Okay, Ted, any questions or comments?
Um, I'd like to go last, if I may, here with the other members of the say, okay?
Okay, Ivan.
Um, just my opinion, I think um, I like the idea that it's doable at the corporate yard. I think um the potential for having more of these hiccups we've had along the way would be a lot less. We could avoid a sequo. Um, I just don't know if I think we have a lot more um flexibility now with the regional plant that we did when we made the decision to go away from the corporate yard two years ago, three years ago. Um, I don't know how minimal of effort it would be to kind of expand on the corporate yard idea um, without putting too much time into it, but just to see more of just more than just that one overlay um, and maybe some potential. I mean, how much is it going to cost to relocate the the yard temporarily to build the building? I mean.
I've got all those answers. Um, and we can go, if we'd like to hear them today, we can. Um, the first answer to your question would be again, knowing that we have a second location that Renewal Clark never looked at, they could put together schematics and they could do an assessment of the corporate yard under their existing contract with no additional cost. So we could do, if I got, if we got direction from the board, we could authorize them to do that tomorrow or this afternoon for all intents and purposes. About the corporate yard and what would we do with that? We have not talked to the folks down there and how would you best manage them and how, what would best suit them. However, since then, the production group has continued to work out of this office. We just recently moved the field services staff up here. And the wastewater staff is now going to be, come December, split in two locations. They're going to be both at the Wright facility and at the Horton facility. So they're a little bit more spread out than they used to be. So that really leaves the construction and management staff, the only ones remaining there, which is roughly ten, eleven people and our warehouse and where all the deliveries go. So the only thing that we can, the only thing that we've really come up with is when you go out and Steve brought, brought it up. If you look at some of the early renderings of the right plant, there's all that available space. And if you think of all the excavation that's taken place, they're going to, they're not going to put sand back there and just leave it. They're going to put gravel. So in reality, all that area is going to be gravel space for additional space, parking and things like that. So we do have the opportunity to park trucks, move things down there, chlorine deliveries. We actually have that location available to us, which again, we did not have years ago. So from that perspective, in in just general discussions, we do have other options that would allow us to do that. So that that's the long answer to a short question, but we are looking at those options. But again, we haven't really put a pen to paper because we didn't want to go start going down rabbit holes, getting people excited about things if it wasn't the direction of the board.
Hmm. Well, for the options presented today, I mean, I think the regional plant is just too far out along our border. You know, if we did it at the corporate yard, it'd still be relatively in our community, easy for people to access. That's just my opinion, but no further question.
Robert? So I know you said the current spot is not dead in the water, but let's kind of be honest and say it is. Um, if you're looking for sixty acres somewhere of pristine in that specific overlay, you're going to have a hard time as well as a large cost that I think is going to add that we don't want. Um, just as a side note, the uh, and Ted, Director Meyerhoff and I were on the planning commission when this came before us. Um, I think the second time there was a, across the street from Campanero, um, there was a condo development proposed and that land just went up for sale under bankruptcy. So that company went under. Just saying, not that we want to buy more property, but in terms of the options, um, the corporate yard seems kind of location-wise pretty good to me. Uh, it is near the library, so it's, it's not that it's that far out of town. Um, if you have, we do have a sizable number of people that pay in person. I think if you locate it out at, all the way out Little Morongo out at the Wright plant, that's quite a bit of a hike. It's not on a bus line. Um, the uh, the corporate yard would be on a bus line. There's a bus stop actually right out there. Um, it's also close to the little, is that the Wick Office, Social Services Office? They are talking about the county putting in housing across the street from that. And they're also talking about extending the paving all the way to two bunch palms um, as well as putting that light in there at Palm, so you would have more Ingris and Egris. I don't think you'd have, you wouldn't have a sequel issue. You wouldn't have a traffic study needed because the trips will be reduced. Um, so uh, I mean, from from a logistical standpoint, that makes sense to me. Uh, I'm not sure without seeing how they would have to maneuver stuff, but it it just in terms of your options, that seems to me that probably your most reasonable option. So it's my thought.
Amber?
Yeah, it's it's so hard to tell based on you, your own mind's eye to try and envision these things. And if, if there is no additional cost in having them look at the corporate yard as an option um, to kind of find out what we would be looking at and what we would have to say goodbye to. Um, I'm not opposed to that. I I do have a a concern that I would like us to address before we would go down that route. Um, when we were on our tour, there were some owls brought to our attention. I would like us to make sure we have no environmental species issues at the yard that we're currently protecting or 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 um mitigating any issues regarding prior to having the architects uh, move forward with any work on that. I'd like to make sure that environmentally, I know with Sequo because it's already disturbed, we're not going to have a lot of problems, but if there are any species around there, we'd like to know first. Thanks. Oh, one more thing. So sorry. Um, during our East Valley tour, just to kind of um, reiterate what Director Griffith said regarding public transportation. One of the things that our tour guide had told us they didn't account for when they built their building on the far end of their district was that the closest bus route ended three and a half miles prior to it. And they had senior citizens walking three and a half miles from where that bus stop dropped them off. So I do think, given our community, it is very important for us to make sure that whatever location we select has the access to the public regard, from public transportation. Um, because if we put ourselves somewhere where they can't get to us, we're not doing anybody any favors. So just those two things. Thank you.
Okay. Ted?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Manci for the time he spent with me, looking this over and we threw around a couple of ideas there. Um, as far as the two bunch palms property goes, I remember there was an environmentalist. And I asked the question a couple of times, even if we get past the point of the sixty acres, we still have the other environmental issues that may be on that property with the endangered species. So they, if you look back at that meeting, you'll see that they, I brought that up. So I would, I would kind of say that the two bunch ponds is dead in the water for number of reasons that have been brought up so far. The Nancy Wright Treatment Plant, the concern also was the transportation for our people being so far out there. As far as the Horton Plant goes, if you decide to do it there, you're going to have problems with, you know, the two ponds. I don't know if there's some environmental issues there. I think you may have mentioned, Brian, that that some paperwork that you have to go through before you can.
A- absolutely. We we went through in the last eighteen months, we went through the process of adding the additional ponds to the south of there and getting that part of our permit. So what we would have to do is meet with the regional board and take those two ponds, relocate one, take the other and make sure that we have, we have adequate protection between the two. So yes, there is some work with the regional board that would have to be done, but I don't believe based on what we had to do to add the three ponds, that it would be what I would consider very significant. But we would, we would go through that process, so I can add that to the list as well.
That would be one of the things we'd have to look at before we made any decision to be there.
Absolutely.
One, one question, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing is, is the cost of backfilling and compaction on those ponds. And if I'm hearing correctly, we'll be able to take our existing blueprints that we have and put over there. Are we going to have to come up with new blueprints again?
There will be have to, there will be have to be site modifications to the set of blueprints. However, the buildings themselves, I would call architecture five feet outside the building would stay the same. They just have to be moved around and the site have to be done. You do bring up a very good point about filling in the ponds. Our staff actually constructed the ponds that are there now. However, I would strongly recommend that the contractor that we select through this process, through the bidding process, compact those ponds because they're ultimately going to be responsible for that building. So there's some things that are going on there. Where would we get some of that fill? We just, I think we have how many thousands of cubic yards at twenty-four, twenty-two and forty-two? Yeah, but there were, there was a city project where we actually accepted a bunch of soil, thinking that we were going to use it at two bunch because we knew we had to elevate that site. So now we're just moving it to a different location. So ju- as luck would have it, in this case, we do have some soil that we can use to also fill in these ponds as well, and we would work with the contractor to make sure that uh, he's aware of those things.
Okay, and the traffic is, it was one of my concerns too.
Mine too, and it's one of the things I want to bring up.
And I believe it last night I already mentioned about two hundred, three hundred vehicles coming in and out of there every day. Is that correct?
Okay.
Use your microphone, please.
I say if we moved everything down there, I don't know, I'm estimating. I mean, knowing the number of individuals we have here.
We have roughly twenty-three employees here. So you would, people going down there, you would add roughly maybe fifty, sixty, seventy trips, but what we would be removing would be the dumpster, the, excuse me, the trash hauling, the buses and everybody that use that CNG station. So the actual trips to that location would go down. So from that perspective, the traffic issues would actually be less after we move there than they are today. Not to mention all the trips that we go back and forth between the corporate yard and here, just as our normally daily routine. So yes, that is a concern that we had, but after we started thinking through it and knowing that that natural gas station, when we rewrote the last contract, we made sure that we could give them six months to vacate that piece of ground so we could do a building at that location. So we've actually been able to mitigate that over the last six months as well.
I have, I have a question concerning the traffic. Okay. Back on, on what Ted was saying. Have we done a feasibility study to determine whether or not we could build a, a road or an access uh, from, from the uh, facility east so that we didn't have to go, our trucks and and employee vehicles wouldn't have to go out on the Palm Drive, in other words, go the other direction in order to throughout the, I mean, it would still give you access to the city and everything, but we wouldn't have to to go down Palm, which which about this time, uh, from about two or three o'clock, it's a parking lot from on Palm all the way to the freeway, and it would be awful to have to, to try and cross that intersection or if we could just build something that would give us access to the east of that. Is it feasible? Did we look into that at all?
So when we were talking with the city about this particular parcel a couple of years ago, um, there were some, there was some talk about them wanting to basically repave that area and clean that up a little bit. Since then, they're now talking, now the library is in place, we're talking about this residential facility that may be going up across the street of our park. They will be conditioned and the city is also working on a stormwater plan, all three of those different projects coming together. And they're looking for other ways to get people off of Palm for all the reasons you just mentioned, where they would actually want us to move our fence back to open up that right-of-way, take the tamarisk trees out, come back to where our sanitary sewer is versus where we are today, because that fence meanders through that area. Take it back to the right-of-way, or not a right-of-way, but an easement line, which we would establish with a new fence after we took down the tamarisk trees. Then we would work with the city to make sure that the storm drain and everything goes into there, goes into that. And then they're also talking about bringing down a storm, a storm sewer down Verbena, which then connect to two bunch palm, and I believe that's what Director Griffith was making reference to when they're talking about connecting that area as a thoroughfare to get to two bunch pumps and start going up in that direction.
That was a major reason why we kind of left that to go over to two bunch. Was access to and from the location and we didn't want to have to go out on on the Palm. Every time we had to go there or leave and and God forbid, if we had to cross the intersection and to get to the other side of Palm, um.
And and not to be, not to bring up that, but for the other three members, they had, the city was talking about that light going up at that location for even before the library, they talked about it going up as the library was being constructed. They've also mentioned to us that the six and a half acres across the street behind the, the grocery outlet is conditioned to build that light. Our most recent conversation with the city, it was, there's just not enough accidents at that location to garner light at that time. However, this residential development that's going in there will require it no matter what. And as I understand it, that is out for an RFP through the county as we speak.
We, we we can't count on any any developing until they develop it.
Correct.
So.
We'll pay for it. Do it, we'll pay for it.
No, you're saying, do you remember what I mean, is if we give this, we'll, we'll, we'll pay for the streetlight? That's a couple of million dollars right there.
They're going to make us pay for some of the improvements, I'm assuming.
Yes. So here's, here's where I'm really at with all this. It's this is a, a big project. And in the beginning, when I first got here in December of twenty-one, I asked a few questions about, do we have a project manager looking into all this? And I was kind of led to believe we do, and I believe Director Depp also asked about a, a project manager. I think that we've gotten to the point now that if we do anything else, I think we really should get a, a certified project manager with at least five years' experience. And I, I know that this has kind of been your, your project going along, but you're moving into a new position now. And which means a pay raise naturally. So when we look at the cost of what we're paying you and the cost of a project manager, it's cheaper for the project manager to go ahead and take things over. And naturally, you know, coordinate with you and I'd still like to be involved myself. So that's, that's where I'm at, and that'd be my recommendation to the board right now. Because we have so many different options on the table with different properties. Are we going to be able to salvage the plans we already spent money on? My recommendation to the board is that we go for a project manager.
We have to move along. Well, can you get their kind of question?
Just very quickly, let me respond to that. Just very quickly, let me respond to that. Director Meyerhoff, and you must have been in my office today because I got an email from Renew Clark asking me if there was anything I needed for this particular meeting. And I told them what the agenda was and we were planning. And I then followed up with, by the way, I may be getting promoted. You may have to take in a larger role as the project manager. So I am working with Renew Clark and setting them up to do exactly that.
So then you're in agreeance with?
Absolutely. I realize that my, my plate is going to be moved a little bit in the next couple of weeks. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item fifteen. Thank you for your patience, Ashu and Amelia. The Energy Conservation Efficiency Service Plan Update, NG Services, U.S. Ashu.
Good afternoon. President Martin, members of the board, staff, I'm Ashu Jain with NG Services. I'm with Amelia Cottrell and Jay Puthi, our engineer, who've been working on this project, along with the rest of the, rest of our team who's not here. So I don't know if Mr. Macy wanted to say anything, but I can launch into it. Okay. So, um, over the last, um, several months since the what do I move this? Okay, I can. Okay. All right, thanks. So we just wanted to recap where we are and how we got, got here. Uh, back on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, when the new board came into, um, uh, was seated. We were selected, uh, by this board based on a request for qualification. And since then, we've been diligently working with staff and, um, you know, meetings and sidewalks and, uh, you know, we started with a bigger scope of work. And we, uh, eliminated a lot of the opportunities, uh, as not being viable. And so ultimately, we, staff and your staff and us, we decided on bringing a solar project. Um, and today, there's no, uh, it's obviously a study session. We just wanted to give you the, the basics of the project. And, um, uh, I think Mr. Macy can talk about next steps after we are done with this, um, if, if your board wants to move forward. So, uh, just wanted to recap very quickly. Uh, you know, who we are and just, um, you know, just wanted to remind the board that, uh, we are a very large company. And, uh, we, um, we have, we are the largest company in the state doing these projects. We have a tremendous amount of experience. We've done uh, over four hundred megawatts of solar, um, for public entities. We only work for public entities and, uh, we're, we're financially very sound and we can guarantee, we guarantee savings for twenty years. And so you can rest assured that we have the financial strength to do that and, uh, at this, uh, for this district. Excellent. So, um, the, the district is currently spending, um, around, uh, two point three million dollars. Uh, and all their facilities. Um, so that's how much you're spending, um, um, in the timeframe of this project. So, excellent. What we're recommending is, um, seven solar projects. In the appendix, um, we have, I don't know, uh, in the appendix, we have the layouts of all the projects, but we've gone through them with your staff. Um, all of them are ground mount systems. One of them is next to your existing RESBCT solar project site. So that, um, so it's, uh, it's next to that. But, uh, yeah, we've gone through this with staff and you're welcome to take a look at it. It's in the appendix if you choose, if you want to. So total of three point six megawatts and that was decided based on either the space, either the space was a restriction at each site or the amount of electricity that we can, uh, that that site generated. So mostly it was the space that was a restriction for us. We couldn't put, we could put more solar, but there wasn't enough space there. Next slide, please. And please stop me at any time if you have questions. Um, so we, we haven't, uh, you know, our, our, our cost for this project is eighteen point four million dollars. We haven't finalized the financing. We don't finance projects. Uh, we, we can arrange the financing. And based on our discussion with staff, we will do an RFP for financing. And we don't make any money on it. Um, and we'll, uh, do an RFP, invite, uh, ten, twelve banks. And then let staff and your board decide, uh, who you want to pick for financing the project. Again, if you choose to move forward, preliminarily, we think based on, uh, our discussion with Bank of America, who's one of the biggest lenders in our industry, uh, that, you know, your interest rate will be somewhere in the four point one five, four point two five range as of today. Obviously, it can vary by the time you finalize all this. We looked at your electricity escalation for the last four years. The rate that you're on has been only around for four years, um, or will, that you'll be going to. And we found that your rates have been going up at fifteen percent per year. Um, so we are only assuming six percent per year escalation in our, uh, in our project cash flow. So the, obviously the higher the escalation that we assume, the more the savings would be. So six percent, we feel is pretty conservative. Um, we guarantee the savings for twenty years, uh, to match the financing term. And if the savings are less than what we predicted, then there's a mechanism in the contract for us to, uh, pay, make the district whole every year. We have our own trucks. We own, for operation and maintenance. Uh, we will maintain the solar project completely. Anything goes wrong for this, uh, on the solar project for twenty years, it'll be on us. There is an O and M contract that will be part of the, um, part of the, uh, you know, one of the contracts that we would be asking the district to sign with us if they choose to go forward with us. There is an Inflation Reduction Act that was passed in August. All the details are not final, except we do know, um, you know, what kind of, um, um, you know, what kind of cash subsidy the district will get after completion of the project. It should be roughly around six point three million, um, or it should be six point three million dollars is what our estimate is right now. And I'll, I'll, I'll go into a little more detail about that. So based on that, um, the net savings annually work out to around three hundred and twenty-five thousand after paying for all costs and over the life, the thirty year life of the project. It's around thirty-two million. So fairly attractive project. On the right, we have some graphs. Uh, the one on the top shows, you know, what your savings cumulatively look like uh, over the life of the project. As you pay the lease off, obviously they shoot up, uh, after year twenty. And, uh, the graph below shows that, you know, obviously, uh, shows what your electricity, uh, consumption will, uh, how it'll go down. I did want to point out, which I forgot to mention, we did file your interconnection applications uh, before April fifteenth, which was the deadline. So that you're grandfathered into the current savings for twenty years. Otherwise, it would have been gone, it would have gone down by twenty-five, thirty percent. Next slide. Uh, I think that's a little more, uh, I like the slide, um, because it shows, you know, how this project, um, really there's no out of pocket for the district. If you, the, the bar on the left shows over the thirty year life of the project. If you don't do the project, you'll be spending around hundred and eighty million dollars on electricity. Based on six percent escalation. But if you do the project, your electricity consumption will go down to one hundred and twenty-nine million. Then you have lease payments. You have the solar operation and maintenance cost and you'll save thirty-two million. So at, you know, there is no way that this is, uh, you know, you'll have any out of pocket, um, and it's guaranteed by us. And, and there are well, let me in the next slide tell you what the risks are for both of us. Um, we're providing you a guarantee, a guaranteed phone price. Um, we're guaranteeing ninety-five percent of the savings that we identified. Now, the district's risk is what if the escalation of electricity cost is not six percent? What if it goes down to five percent, four percent? Actually, it's two point eight percent is the actual number. At two point eight percent, you break even. So if the electricity cost over the next thirty years goes, escalates by below two point eight percent, you will actually lose money on this project. But, you know, as I said, it's been increasing by fifteen percent. So that I don't think anybody will tell you that electricity will. And electricity cost has been rising at much more than CPI. So, uh, I think you're pretty safe at six percent, but I did want to identify that, that risk. The other risk, which is not really a risk, so the so the Inflation Reduction Act, uh, there's a base credit of thirty percent. Then there are bonus credits for various things. The one that applies to this district is the low income bonus credit. You get ten percent more because you're in a low income disadvantaged area. The rule for this ten percent bonus credit, the, the, the map is out and we can see that it's there, but the rules are not all out. And it'll be August end or September beginning that the rules will be out. So do I think you'll get it? Yes. Can I guarantee it? No. You know, I mean, we don't guarantee things we don't control anywhere, but I'm saying it's a, it's a risk. Uh, you know, it's a federal program. So I just wanted to uh, you know, the chances of you not getting it is pretty remote, but you know, I, I just wanted to, uh, put it out there that that is something that, because the rules are not out, out yet, we cannot for sure say that, yes, you'll qualify. But it seems like you will. So here are the benefits, uh, just to summarize, you have, you know, thirty-two million in savings. We're only reducing your cost by thirty percent, which is pretty low for us. We always are able to reduce much more, but problem is you don't have space, much as you would think that. And I guess we just had this whole discussion about the, about your, uh, citing the building. So it's not that space is really available, but we need space next to the meters and you're limited. Either the terrain or something else, um, comes in the way. So I think only one location, we could avoid hundred percent of the cost. And then in many locations, you don't have space at all. And we had to rely on this central project, which is not that attractive. Uh, I mean, which, which doesn't avoid a lot of costs. So that's why we are only at thirty percent. The more you save, the less you're dependent on, um, SCE. That's why it's a hedge against rising electricity cost. As I mentioned, we already filed the, um, NEM, uh, two point oh application. That application mandates that you finish the project by April of twenty-six. If you don't finish the project by April of twenty twenty-six, you'll lose, um, that, uh, benefit and your savings will be going down by twenty-five, thirty percent. So that's, that's catastrophic. Um, you get six point three million dollars in Inflation Reduction Act cash subsidy. There is a provision in there that if you delay, if you start the construction, not this year, but next year, it goes down by ten percent. So instead of six point three, it'll be five point, you know, seven. Uh, to start construction, there's a definition in the code, what it means. It means we have to spend five, uh, it says that, uh, we have to spend five percent of the contract amount on construction. So which means we'll have to engineer the project. And, um, you know, order material and all that. So, so we need some time, uh, to do all that. Uh, I think that's some of the main things I wanted to highlight. I don't know if we have another slide or not. The roadmap, uh, this is very tentative. It's, um, you know, uh, if your board chooses to move forward, I think, uh, I would, um, staff thinks that we will do another study session in the August board meeting. Um, we'll have more details on the financing, uh, more firm numbers on the financing. Uh, and then, um, if staff feels to bring it forward, um, to the board for consideration, uh, hopefully in September, uh, we can bring it to the board for, uh, approval. And then, uh, it'll take us a couple of years to build the project. And, uh, that's being a little optimistic because electrical items are really back, uh, back ordered right now. And it's a, it's a big problem for us. I think that's a last slide.
Yeah. Before we open up to questions, just let me add that one of the things that staff has heard over the last six months is that you don't want to see the contract when we're asking for an answer. Therefore, that's why we wanted to get this in front of you, knowing that there's some timing hooks related to grant funding and things like that. So we made sure to get it on this agenda. We can bring it back in August if there's any questions and we'd actually prefer to do that, to answer any questions. And then if we felt that the board wanted to move forward, then we would bring it in September with the contract. So we do hear some of the, we do hear what you're saying and we're trying to accommodate that. And this is one of the projects that we've, that we think is beneficial to the district. Our existing solar field, a little bit different in that we, uh, received three million dollars in grant and only put up half a million of our own money. But just for reference purposes, we are generating a hundred and forty thousand dollars credit on that. So in reality, we've paid off our five hundred thousand dollar investment five years into that project. The payoff on this one's not quite as much, but there is a significant savings. So with that, I think, as you can answer any questions at this time, or you can hold on to them and we can talk about them on Monday or bring it back. We will be bringing back something in August.
Okay, this is, uh, just an informational.
It is just informational.
Not going to be faced with a, with a voter decision till sometime in September.
Absolutely. Yes.
Right. Amber?
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work you're putting into this so far. Just a couple of questions based on your presentation. You said that we would potentially lose money if construction was not started by the end of the year and that would be your architecture, engineering, design work? Did I understand you correctly?
The design work doesn't for, for the Inflation Reduction Act, they don't include design work as start of construction.
Okay.
So you actually have to do the design and then order material and spend five percent on that.
So are you, am I understanding you correctly that the likelihood of us being able to complete that at this point is small or none?
We're very confident that if you make a decision in September, we'll be able to do it.
Okay, that's, that was a clarification I needed. Um, the other thing I wanted to make sure, and I'm sure that it just wasn't mentioned. We have the new fleet electrification requirements coming to us in, in January or, or shortly thereafter. Did you take into account the added uh, energy use that we will be using when those charging stations for electric vehicles are put into place?
We started on, on that path based on staff's direction and we understood that most of them will be going with the new building. So we actually were planning on that, but all that went haywire when the building went away. So so now we file the applications with these sizes. You cannot exceed these sizes. And, uh, I think you wanted to say something. Go ahead.
I was just going to clarify, that's one of the, we can't get a full benefit for the right facility. And why we potentially, he was talking about thirty percent down the road. Uh, if we, if the situation presents itself, we can then again add to our existing solar facilities and, and go through a different process. The NIM, correct me if I'm wrong, the NIM three point oh is not going to be as lucrative as two point oh, but there is still a RESPCT that we can go, I said that wrong again. And we can go through and add to our existing solar field and try to offset even more solar. So I would consider this, this is a project and it's by itself and it's a big project. It's eighteen million dollars. However, we're not done trying to find other ways to battery power, things like that.
And depending, of course, on whatever decision we were to make about the administrative building, what would be your ability to include solar needs? If we were to find our new location while you're in the middle of this project, are you able to amend the project? And, and add that in? Or would we have to do a whole new contract with you to do the next?
We had discussion with staff, um, when we presented this last week and there was a mention that if, if the location is in, at the corporate yard, uh, we can actually add to the RESPCT project that we are proposing. We can add two hundred kilowatts, which is what I think is needed for that building. And we'll be able, able to avoid around thirty, thirty-five percent of the cost of running that building. For the two years, because we'll do the project, by the time we do the project, it will be, you know, end of twenty twenty-five, your building might or might not be ready by then. So for a year, you might have, you know, the solar system might be oversized. But in the long term, it'll more than pay for itself. Or we can do that, you know, three months down the road as a change order also. So it's not So it's not a decision that you have to make at the at this time.
But it is something that we, for efficiency purposes, we would be able to readdress as we're going through this project. With change.
Correct. I mean, we would like to know for the Inflation Reduction Act and all that, we're going to complete our engineering quickly. So maybe by October end, we will need to know whether you want us to expand the RSB CT system by two hundred kilowatts or not.
Okay. Thank you so much for the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert?
I just, based on, I'm going to bounce off of her, but would that change order, would that, would that? What's the word? Would that cancel the NEM two because?
No, the RSB CT, sorry for interrupting you. The RSB CT has nothing to do with NEM.
Okay.
Totally different rate schedule, doesn't have a deadline. It has a cap. So the SCE has a hundred and twenty-five megawatt cap. They're right now at around sixty-five, so there's a lot of space.
Okay. And then one, so the rates listed in this, just I forget what page I'm on, but it's like point, it's like twenty cents a kilowatt hour. Is that what we're currently paying or what it would end up costing?
You are, that includes a built-in escalation, but that is the rate that you'll be paying. It's what you're paying.
It's what we're currently paying.
Yeah, but it's not what you're avoiding.
No.
Solar will only avoid like ten cents out of the twenty.
No, no, I I understand. I mean, I'm a little upset because I pay a hell of a lot more than that. So that's why I'm trying to get this. Just classify my house as a business. I'm set, right? I think as far as the inflation goes, I can tell you this, this is an article about PG&E electricity prices going up something like five point seven this past month. So I think six percent is pretty conservative, given what most of us who have electricity. So I'm I'm looking forward. I do think it would be nice to have a workshop for us to really kind of dig in a little deeper. And that way, we can all make an informed decision. Thank you so much. This is really informative. And I'm eager to kind of study more and get to more questions for next month.
Thank you.
Ted?
I didn't remember back in the summer, when you presented this to us, that we were in no obligation whatsoever to. And that's still.
You have no contract. You're under no, you can tell us now or in September that you don't want to work with us. There'll be, you don't owe us a dime.
I I think it's a wonderful project. You've done a lot of work on it. And I'm just concerned about where we're at with financing on some other projects. I will also with our new critical service center, we can go with the lead green. I'm sure you're familiar with that. And the closer we can get to that, we, it'll be wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. Ivan?
Just a great presentation, and I think, you know, any chance for us to save money is a good, good project. So when you mentioned the two point oh, is there a deadline that we'd have to have everything constructed by to still be eligible for that?
April twenty-six.
Okay, and that would be to start construction?
No, to end construction. April, April of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And then just in comparison, how much solar would this add compared to our existing solar field?
Your other, your existing one is one megawatt. This is three point seven megawatts.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ashu. It's a pleasure. You're good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
You too, Amelia.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. That's the approval of the minutes for June sixth, June fifteenth, and June nineteenth. There's also the register of demands. A grant of easement with the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission for APM six, six, five, two hundred dash zero three. Does anybody want to pull any of these items for discussion today? Amber?
I do have a couple of questions on the register of demands.
Okay. Before you start on there, we'll find out if there's anything else. I'm good. You're good. Ted? Ivan? Take it away, Amber.
Okay, just a couple of small questions. And I just have to find them here. I apologize. Oh, the ESRI Small Utility Enterprise Agreement, one of three. Am I missing, I I'm trying to recall what that agreement is. Could someone just give me a reminder as to what that agreement was for?
Kurt, Kim.
It's related to our GIS and Work Order Management System that we're starting.
Oh, okay.
I just couldn't remember the initials. Thank you very much. And then the only other one I had, I had noticed toward the end of the report that we had an employee injury. Looks like we had to pay for for a couple of employees to go see a physician. I just wanted to know if there was any issues that that the board should be aware of in regards to how the accident or injuries took place? And and have we ensured that we are doing whatever we need to do to mitigate future issues of this repeating itself?
Oh, yeah, I probably would recommend that we, and I don't, Peg, you might want to speak up that we give.
Close session, possibly.
Well, we may be able to just provide it in writing, so.
That's fine. And I don't need details. I just want to, I guess, make the statement that I want to make sure that we are addressing however, whatever took place.
Any incident that happens on one of our sites or even here in this building, we do have a supervisor incident report where we do exactly that. We evaluate what happened, what happened to the employee, what the result was, and then how can we do it better? Some of it can be training, some of it can be, you know, a different mat. You see some different mats around here because we had a trip here. So we we do that on every single thing. I don't, I can't speak specifically about this, these incidents. But we do, we do have a process that we go through to make sure that we try to mitigate it from happening again.
Perfect. I didn't need any specifics. I just was trying to understand if it was a bigger issue or just a day-to-day smaller issue, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nineteen, Director's Reports. Does anybody want to go today? No, no? No? Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Oh, that's good, yeah. Well, I have a lot to report, but I don't want to keep us here till six o'clock, so. We'll do on Monday, General Manager's Report, Finance Report, and Public Affairs Report.
We can do those both on Monday. I know Arturo wants to do his, and Marion said she's prepared to do hers on Monday.
Okay. District Council comments. Do we have anything from Peg?
No comments, but thank you for asking.
All right. And final Director's comments on the meeting today, Amber?
No comments today. Thank you.
Robert?
Nope.
Ivan? Ted? Okay, with that, we'll take a ten-minute break and we'll move into closed session. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the board had a rather lengthy discussion on this. The the contract is acceptable. There's a couple of issues that that we would like addressed that are outside the the contract. And and myself and V will meet with you at the conclusion of this meeting to discuss those those issues. And no further reportable action will be taken today until Monday, when we make the public announcement and stuff. So there's nothing further from the board. Meeting is adjourned.